It's seven o'clock, we call the meeting to order.
As required by the Open Police Meetings Act number seventy-five out of the rules, this meeting is provided on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one by publication of notice in the Express Times and the Hunter County Democrat and by posting of notice in this government on the same day. Mayor Barson?
Here.
Mr. Baylor?
Oh. Here.
Here.
Mr. Baylor? Ms. McDermott? Mr. Fennelly?
Here. Yeah, I signed them.
And your last name?
Kazinsky.
Kazinsky.
I'll email you the spelling.
Sure, it's in an email somewhere.
Oh, please stand for it. A little laggy when I got there.
I pledge allegiance to the fire in the United States of America, to do the republic the way it stands, for all nations of America, into the results of our leaders.
Okay. So will you go alone or are you expecting somebody to come over?
Oh.
One man show?
Ranger.
Okay, then we're ready for you. We had to wait, we waited. We're gonna have a conversation.
Okay, um. I'm a administrator clerk, ask for a report. Usually I hand one in for our, for our calls, but with COVID and not having meetings and stuff, uh, it's been three years now. So the report for the fire department, I figure I start off with the, uh, the run calls from two thousand nineteen to present. All two thousand nineteen, the fire department started assisting the squad with EMS calls on a as-needed basis and then two thousand twenty, we started doing a six AM to six PM Monday through Friday. So our incident runs for two thousand nineteen, we ran a total of two hundred and twenty-five incident calls. Then I broke it down as fire department runs, which we've run anyway, and then EMS assist, two hundred and four runs that year and twenty-one EMS assists. Two thousand and twenty seen a significant increase in our runs, two hundred and seventy-seven, twenty-three percent increase, but our fire runs were down by twelve percent, one hundred and eighty-three EMS assists up to ninety-four, an increase of three hundred and fifty percent over two thousand nineteen, which was because of a partial year. Two thousand twenty-one, a significant increase all the way across the board, three hundred and eighty-seven incident runs total, forty percent increase, two hundred and seventy-seven incident runs, thirty-five percent fire department runs and a hundred and thirty incident runs, which is a thirty-nine percent increase. Also our mutual aid there just for two thousand twenty-one, my computer system and our, our program breaks it down for that. We received mutual aid third, three times and gave mutually aid thirty-two times. That varies from anywhere from automatic alarms, which even our fire department responds to the Filtsburg High School, the new high school for fire alarm activation when, when it's occupied, to structured fires, motor vehicle accidents and of those sorts. The departments that we provided that mutual aid to was Harmony Township, Bloomsbury Borough, Franklin Township, La Patcon, Kohakon and Filtsburg. And then there was actually two in other towns in Hunter County and we did respond one, which was after the one tropical storm to Somerset County to assist the company and, uh, thanks. What I did do, I did, I don't have it there, but I did break down the mutual aid calls. Harmony, we gave mutually aid to two times, Bloomsbury fifteen, Franklin three, La Patcon two, Kohakon six and Filtsburg one. Fire company conducts thirteen business meetings a year and thirty training drills, work details and approximately ten fire prevention or public events throughout any given year. Training requirements to be a firefighter, I know this has been asked a lot and, uh, for a new recruit to get on to the, to fight a fire, he needs to be trained up to a hundred and eighty-four hours. Firefighter one, this, this spring is a hundred and eighty-four hours plus twenty hours of hazardous material awareness operations training for a total of two hundred and four hours. And they also have to pass a written and a practical skills exam. This is all, uh, monitored and this is all from the division, New Jersey State Division of Fire Safety establishes these minimum requirements. And as of two thousand twenty, I'm on the Board of Advisors for the Fire Academy. The Division of Fire Safety is making it a requirement that within three years, these firefighter one certified firefighters take firefighter two, which is additional eighty hours of training that they have to seek. All this training is free through the Warren County Fire Academy, which is a sub of the Public Safety Department of Warren County. Annual refreshers, all firefighters, fire police had, uh, have to review our hazmat, write the note training and review, compliance space review, lockout, tagout procedures and every two years, uh, refresh or retake our CPR and AED recertification. Membership, the fire department has right now on our roster is twenty-three firefighters, one probationary firefighter, he's going through fire school right now, one junior and one cadet. Junior member is sixteen to eighteen and a cadet is fourteen to sixteen. The state law has just changed to junior firefighters can get their certification training, go to the fire academy like a regular firefighter and get trained and when he turns eighteen, he can just send in his paperwork and he'll be certified as a firefighter one level. He can get on the truck. Prior, prior to this law change, we're just waiting, the law's been approved, they're working on the language. Prior to this, they had to wait till they were eighteen, then do the training and then be certified, which could be six months or, or longer before that. Um, financially, we do, the fire department's done an annual mailing, uh, fund drive letter for the last thirty years. Up to the last fifteen, we have used that money and put it into our building fund for the future of getting a fire station. It averages anywhere between thirteen to seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars. We get, gets a load, it gets a load turnout of responses. We get an average of anywhere between sixteen percent to twenty percent returns on the mailers that we send out. And the last thing on our, we have applied the last two years for a FEMA grant, uh, looking to replace all the firefighters PPA. That's our turnout here, helmet, coats, pants, boots, two pair of gloves, two hoods. If we're successful, that grant will be up in the area of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the number of firefighters that we have right now. Any questions?
I don't, Joe, mother and, thank you.
Bad news that I might have is just this week, uh, think transmissions out in the aerial truck. I gotta have it checked. We were out on a drill Monday night and it stopped moving, they shut it all, started back up and it creaked at a certain point that I rechecked it here Tuesday and I think transmission's going on, but I wanted to check it because it's all electronic transmission.
Did you have to have a tow? Did you get it back to you?
What that?
Did you have to have a tow or did you?
Now, I nursed it back, it took me from up by Bill's house, it took me about twenty-five minutes to get back down.
Side of the road there, you know, like, you can see smoke.
So that there's gonna be something, I, I don't know what, I couldn't imagine what it costs, it's probably gonna be an area of ten to twelve thousand dollars.
Well, maybe with any luck at all, it's an electronic module, it's only.
That's why I got to check it out first.
Yeah.
Get into all that.
Thanks, Joe, and certainly, I appreciate, I'm sure we all appreciate what the fire company does in the township and.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. For a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting in March seventeenth and the special meeting for the budget March ninth. I'm gonna make the motion. Can we want a second? Anybody have any questions, comments, corrections? There's none, real quick.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes, but abstaining from the woman that I was asking.
March nine.
The, uh, the budget, yeah.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah. In Florida. Treasury, looking for a motion to adopt the Treasury's report for the April bill list and March interim bill list. Are they gonna make the motion? I'll second, anybody having any, what, questions?
I, I just have one question. Mike, this is to you. If, um, SCOTUS had to open up the road for a gas, I don't know if they were hooking up a resident to repair or whatever.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, four oh two Bradford, I think.
Yeah, before to Bradford.
Um. Why is SCOTUS not paying you and why are we paying you?
No.
You're filling in.
You're paying me because I work for Greenwood and they, just like an applicant before landings board can't pay me directly.
Right.
They post a fee with the township.
So did they post a fee with us?
Yes, I'm sure Shannon knows the routine, uh, yeah, there was a, there was a check. I don't know the detail exactly what the amount was, uh, but yeah, no, they.
All right, well, that's what I just, I didn't know if we needed to have a, create an ordinance for just for that purpose or whether there's a mechanism already in place?
It's, it's just, it's the street opening, uh, ordinance.
So SCOTUS supposed to pay us for it and not the resident at four oh two Bradford?
Well.
That's what I need clarification, who's supposed to?
SCOTUS, SCOTUS department, yes, SCOTUS should definitely, uh, did you get the checks?
That's what I need to check for SCOTUS.
Yeah.
Cause I know SCOTUS pays us for police escrow, but I don't know if we, I've, I've seen a check for Bradford lately, that's what I need to check for.
I can't recall if we got it and we sent it to you or they sent it right here, but yeah, it's, but yeah, SCOTUS would have paid.
What was the difference we, or maybe I just, you haven't done it yet? Up there on Edison, no, Palmer, there was also an opening that SCOTUS did for gas?
Did we, were we even involved?
Uh-uh. I, I know that there was a road permit from your.
Right. Oh, okay, so we were, okay. There, there's some other folks in the office to get involved with.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to make sure I.
Was, was Pat there, Joe, or?
I don't know who went.
I just got, I got a copy of the street opening permit.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to follow up to see who's, I figured it should be an escrow account and if there's not, then we need to work on having an escrow account just for that.
Well. Lisa, Lisa and I have been going back and forth just recently, uh, today, as a matter of fact, uh, with some discussions regarding, uh, street opening permit applications, driveway permits and so forth and the scheduling. We've kind of, we've said that we probably need to update our ordinance a little bit from a fee standpoint, because nine times out of ten, it doesn't, and it's not much. Uh, so nine times out of ten, it doesn't cover the fees, even if only out there like a couple hours.
All right, so, fair enough.
That's.
That's it, that's the only thing I have, anybody else?
Roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the tax collector's tax and sewer reports for March. Anyone wanna make the motion?
I'll make it. I'll second it.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Rich, Police Department?
Police Department report for the month of March, I call volume one thousand six hundred and eleven calls. Was a, uh, month. Well, the don't arrest, the drunk driving arrests, two hundred and twenty-three summonses issued, ten parking tickets, three hundred and seventy-one warnings. Detective Bureau with twelve additional cases, seven cleared up by arrest. This year are your number four. The detective bureau is a pretty good, and so far, uh, twenty cases out of thirty closed up by arrest. Uh, so they've been extremely busy. And you'll see towards the end of the report, uh, was a month of some high comp time guys accumulating some comp time, a little overtime, so saving us unfortunately was also a high month for overtime. Unusually for March, uh, as you'll see there, we had, uh, it's some significant sick time usage with COVID coming back and, uh, and again, some bereavement days and, uh, some unusual vacation, vacation time not usually taken in March, but, uh, looking for, or looking, uh, looking ahead. The overtime is, uh, is creeping up. One more each month, I was hoping that would start to go down. Today, uh, I received redaction software for our body cameras, so our body cameras are up and running. Not the reduction training for that software, uh, is extremely time consuming. It's something that, uh, gonna find out how much specific man hours that we put into it. However, I anticipate it's gonna be a great deal, uh, being with Danielle in part-time. Uh, it's not something that I'm just gonna be able to defer to, if, if someone wants footage and we have to review that footage and ensure if there's something that has to be redacted, we have to redact it out, um, through this software. And, uh, even if I increased her hours, uh, somewhat, it's, it's not gonna cover that, but there's still other duties that she has to do. I am gonna be, uh, trying to help with some of that, however, that would take a long time away from stuff that I have to do. Just, uh, last week, we had a motor vehicle accident, DUI, ended up using force, the officers had to use force, uh, two officers. That means I have to review their body cam footage from beginning to end for each one of those officers. And it's kind of in live time in a sense that, uh, I had to watch the whole thing in case something happens with a child getting into the video, has to be redacted out. If something, if the officer goes, steps into his car and his, uh, can't, his mobile data, uh, his computers up and their sensitive information there, I have to, um, redact that and, uh, whatnot. Uh, and it's not just, I just put a block on it, it's done, I kind of had to follow the footage to make sure that it's covered and not viewed throughout that. But, uh, getting back to it, two officers, uh, two body cams plus their, uh, their car camera footage I'm gonna have to review. It's gonna be time consuming. So looking forward, I'm probably going to be giving some, most of that assignment to, uh, one of the officers, probably, uh, the lieutenant. It'd be most fitting for him, uh, because the supervisors also have to review, I require them to review, um, their officers footage monthly, just as a checks and balance, make sure everybody's doing everything right and going by policy and whatnot. It's not something that's mandated by the Attorney General yet, however, I anticipate that, uh, going to be, uh, a mandate that we do review that kind of footage on a, uh, on a basis, a monthly basis. So just not to be the very bad news, but, uh, overtime might be going up or, um, we might have to look into doing something with, uh, additional personnel, uh, to fill that spot of the officer, maybe taking, uh, off the road to do that kind of stuff, admin work.
Are you, are you anticipating that even like someone that's gonna contest a speeding violation may request all video and including body cam?
Typically people that contest tickets, the attorney wants all the footage, yes, and they want that.
That's what I mean.
Then yes, yeah, that, that, that's gonna be, uh, a burden, but, um, that, I'm not too concerned about it because it's a motor vehicle, it's all pretty short, it's these longer incidents that last an hour.
Yeah, I understand that, but if you have fifteen cases a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, well, I guess what I'm getting at is the norm now is there's a camera, everybody wants to search. It happens in schools, it happens in grocery stores, everywhere, everybody wants the camera footage all the time. They want every angle and stuff and that costs money. So I'm, I'm thinking it could get pretty voluminous because through discovery, I, I just think they're gonna ask every time.
Discovery alone, yes, this isn't even including an Oprah request, if somebody Oprah requests something, man, that's above the on, you know, but, uh.
Well, I guess what we do is we track it, see what's going on and I think you gotta come, we gotta come up with some ideas either, like, does it, does it have to be a sworn person to review it?
Um. I don't know, because I have, uh, there's agencies have their secretaries doing it or.
Well, so I, I guess what I'm gonna is, can we eventually maybe hire a retired police officer at a less rate, a less hourly rate to do that for us? And, and actually even handling your evidence room for you and stuff, I guess, uh, for so many hours a week or something. I, but we'd have to identify how many hours a week it's gonna be, see one of its worthwhile. And, and if it gets to be too much and, and we're paying, I'm, if we're gonna start paying a lot in overtime, I mean, that's, that's gonna be ridiculous. I, I, I guess what we gotta do is start tracking, because it, if it got to be that high of overtime, does it pay to, if you're gonna have like a lieutenant in charge, hire another guy, put a lieutenant on midnight to supervise the night shift? And his job would be inside reviewing this stuff, getting it ready for court, maybe the third guy to go answer a call, something happened, you know, go assist if something happened.
Yeah, it's.
I guess all I'm saying is we better start tracking and start thinking of ideas, because overtime is gonna, not gonna be a cost factor.
I don't know, and that's, uh, uh, that's what I'm gonna try to follow and have my first, uh, idea of what I'm looking at, um, probably next week when I.
I mean, I said, whoever, like, maybe whoever supervisors on, like, says I actually have to be a lieutenant person. But anyway, have a third person on nights that gets that ready at night, but it's a third person to assist if something happens.
That's all I'm thinking of, something like that.
Is there a fee schedule for, let's say I wanna, I got a copy of retiree.
Yeah, I know, the tape, I think it'd be best. Do you charge, I mean, do we?
For discovery, we wouldn't be charging the man hours for that, you just, like, if it's, uh, if they want a DVD, a DVD's a dollar, but.
But all the, all the redacting, we can't, we can't.
I, I don't know if anybody does, I don't think.
No. Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
So on your monthly report, can we at least have a line item saying how much time you spend redacting of these?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to, yeah, I'm gonna keep that, uh, so I'll just include it on the, on the report, uh.
No matter who does it, whether it's the secretary, you or somebody, you know, how many hours of man hours are being spent on, uh,
absolutely.
redacting and getting these CDs ready for whoever. I'm all for cameras, I really am a big proponent of them, but it's another case where the state mandates things and doesn't give you the money to run it.
Absolutely.
But I do believe in the cameras, I think it's very good, I like, I was pro for the dash cams, I'm very pro for the body cams, but the state always mandates to do it quickly for political purpose, but they never give you the money and never help you with it, they just stomp it on you.
No, they just looked at the, uh, there's money for the cameras, which is the least expensive part of the operation.
Yeah.
And then the other stuff, it's swept under the rug until it comes out.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
These small townships especially that.
Yeah, but they get the political headline of.
Right.
New Jersey mandates body cameras. Municipalities get stuck with bills, second party lines. Okay, that it?
Uh, yeah, is anybody have any questions on anything?
Thanks, very thank you. Joe, DPW?
I just got a couple, uh, great points, um. Set this to March report, um, winter events, we had a total of thirteen, the last winter event was March twelfth, which we had four inches of snow. The DPW had to plow and we had severe drifting that's, that following day. And then we just started shifting gears here through to, uh, the spring sport schedule, uh, setting up fields and stuff and recreation put on me, uh, or put on us, so, spring soccer, so we had some additional, additional fields to do and, uh, instead of that, we're, we're into the point here is making sure they're ready to play, play games and stuff and, and really an open space, uh, out of hold of me about, um, possibly putting a twenty parking, stone parking lot up on the D'Angelo property of Boston Village Road, which I forwarded them, uh, some estimates that would cost for the DPW to do that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, one thing, uh, how, or maybe I should, Shannon, how was our snow budget this year? How do we, fair?
Our snow budget's fine.
Good?
Yes, we're, we're good, we didn't, we didn't use the, that was called abuse and had some breakdowns there near the end, but they're, they're all fixed, everything's back up and running.
Would you like more snow?
No.
I would.
More and more. Lisa?
Paul, are we still holding the municipal parking?
Actually, no, Joe and I kind of discussed that and, um, we can accommodate the couple of residents down there on the corner if need be.
Would, right.
Leave it.
Leave it.
Okay. Um, Mike Flavery is still looking at the animal licensing, he, he didn't get to that, so that's all for tonight. The land leases are actually, I summarize them in my report, but they are on for later because the resolution was prepared in time, so we can do that then. Shannon and I have not yet reviewed the banking RFPs, but we hope to do that and have it on for next month. And then I gave a supplemental report, um, later today because we had, uh, met with the DEP, uh, both Bill and I had. So that kind of summarizes a little bit, I don't know if you guys got to read it yet. Essentially, we met with the DEP, found out the parameters for their testing and all of that stuff and, uh, the girl just sent me the paperwork today that we can get started, um, reviewing that paperwork eventually, um, in order to get, um, get our one resident at Alabot Drive, um, potable water back into their house. They've gone through the process, which I kind of outlined, and a whole house filtration system, for example, is not gonna do it. So they're gonna have to be connected to public water, so that's gonna be coming in the future, hopefully sooner rather than later.
They're still using bottled water?
Yeah, DEP is still delivering it there. So, yeah, just a preliminary meeting, um, and I had a made a call to Aqua to an engineer over there that I've been working with on something else and she forwarded it to the director and she feels pretty confident that they're gonna be able to at least expedite getting somebody out there to take a look and, you know, view the distances and give us an idea of, you know, a basic cost, because, uh, Bill, correct me if I'm missing anything, but essentially they said if we can kind of get a basic cost together in this initial application, they can get the ball going to get funding for us, so. Those are the highlights.
Okay. Thanks. Exercise assessment reports, who's gonna do that, you, Lisa?
Um, I think Jen is probably here, I could go, it, does anybody have any questions? These are the initial appeals that she has received, so if you guys have any specific questions, you might be able to, you know, pull her in to answer a question.
Why even question?
Yeah.
I don't have the right to appeal.
Well, I was just curious as to what and who.
Yeah.
Who's, yeah, who's, uh, Phillips for Greenwood. Cause I know that the, the, um, the folks that, the target people won one a couple of years back and I'm just curious as to who these are, because the, the, the numbers are significant if they win these appeals.
I mean, that's. Goes down to zero, requested assessment of zero?
Uh.
That's through twenty-two, Filtsburg Greenwood LLC?
There she is.
No, I don't. That's everybody, I think you're getting all these.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's what's under appeal, what they're currently charging, nineteen, it says requested assessment of zero, is that right?
Well, no, I think, actually, nothing's changed yet, I think that's what that zero is about. But Jen, who are, oh, over here on P, well, I guess.
Yeah, are we looking at county or court?
Uh.
That's court, okay.
That's the state tax court, that's.
Right, yeah. Who are these folks in?
This is the Target Shopping Center.
I thought they, they recently already had won a judgment a couple of years ago and reduced it because we had like a, a two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar payment.
So that would have had been before my time.
It probably was, but.
Yeah, definitely.
They're appealing again?
Um, I mean, yes, they're, they're.
Um, I mean, yes, they're, they're appealing, I, I was kind of kicking myself.
Well, is it Target or is it Madison Properties?
So, none of that, they're all condoed out, which is why you see it like this. They are technically separate line items. But it's Phillipsburg Greenwich LLC that owns the complex. So they appear as separate assessments because technically they are condoed out. So if he wanted, he or she, the company wanted to appeal them, they would have to file separate appeals like they did.
But yet. Well, I guess it's before your time, I thought Madison Properties put in an appeal and had won their appeal.
They did.
They did, and, and we had to give them like.
Yeah, I mean, oh, it was definitely.
So now, so now Madison Properties as a whole got to do it, now each one of these condos get to do it again?
So it's a taxpayer's right to appeal every year if they want, regardless if they want. Unless there's something in the agreement, like you can, which would at the end of the day hold up in court, probably not, but I've done stipulations where it says. This is the assessment till at least twenty twenty-four, like, don't, don't come for us. Now, if they came for us and they brought from the judge and I weighed that piece of paper, would the judge say that I can really take away their right? Probably not, but it's worth a shot.
Is it, in your opinion, does this go anywhere? I mean, I find it hard to believe that there's a devaluation in commercial property today.
So what you have to keep in mind is our ratio is dropping, just like everybody else's, I mean, I'm trying my darndest, but with this market. With, it's a shame, and every assessor will tell you this, that our overall ratio spreads across all classes. I wish it could be separated out, I wish there was a ratio for commercial properties and a ratio for residential properties. But there's not, there's just one townwide ratio.
Okay.
Um, so with the housing market going crazy, that drives our overall town ratio down and our deviation goes up. And then as a result, it opens the window for more places like this. Because now it's not the assessment I have to defend, because we are below eighty-five percent, it's actually, I should defend a number higher than this. Now, so it makes my job even harder to defend the assessments that are on record.
Okay.
This is so confusing to me.
It is, it is.
Because what you're saying is the market's up, real estate market is up, so should we be arguing that it's worth more now?
So, so it will make, it will make our defense argument a little easier because I can go out and find comps.
Right.
Yes, if there are comps to be found, a commercial market tends to be a little harder. Depending what the next step will be here is, I will work Katrina to do interrogatories and one of my requests will be. Any appraisals done in the last five years for financing, because let's see if someone else has put a number on it before. And if any leases exist, what are they, and I need to see them, because the. The most weight I can put, if it's available, will be the income approach, what income is being made to the land, and that's gonna be.
I don't know if we should talk about this in public, no, there are.
The answer is no, but you're talking in general. And we really, how real these appeals are, and I'm not familiar with, but when it gets up to the state tax court, if it's gonna go to trial, I usually handle it, so. I'm not familiar with these specific appeals, but as the assessor said, the problem with towns in Warren County, basically. Except for something like Phillipsburg, I mean, for rural community. Is our ratio is based upon the residential property, because that's basically what we have, we have some commercial property, primarily residential. So what happens is, is the residential's going up, the commercial, and the ratio is then lower, and commercial is probably not going up. At the same rate as the residential property, in fact, a lot of aspects, commercial was, is falling because of pandemic, we all know. There are empty office buildings, there are empty shopping centers, et cetera. And, and so, and these, by the way, as you probably know, attorneys that do plaintiff's tax appeal work. Do them on contingencies normally, so when, when an attorney that does tax appeal work comes to somebody like this and says. We'll fire your appeal, and what do you got to lose? If we win, you get money and we make money, if you lose, doesn't cost you anything. Except if you go hire an appraiser, so this is what I say is the quote game. And it continues and it will continue on forever and. You really don't know, even though the assessor puts together, normally if we get into heavy appeals, we have to hire an appraiser. When there's an appraisal report, our normal practice is to file a counterclaim every time they file a complaint, so that we. At least as part of the pleadings, argue, hey, they allege that the property's over assessed. We allege that it's under assessed, that's our counterclaim, all right? You don't normally win those counterclaims, by the way, you're very happy to, to have the complaint dismissed. Based upon the fact that they have a, a burden, they have a, a burden of proof. To overcome the presumption of validity of a tax assessment, and that's not an easy burden, depending upon which judge you appear before, but. So, I mean, you know, I, our office has been pretty successful in tax appeal work. So. You know, there, it's harder for a plaintiff to sustain. An appeal than it is for the municipality, because again, the presumption of validity.
Okay, so Jen, you know you're gonna go with it, right?
Yeah.
I'll try my best.
The majority of tax appeals are long and settled. And a, and a commercial appeal would never be settled without governmental council approval. And. And a lot of times, I mean, we try, we try a lot of cases, I just, I just finished a trial with Phillipsburg Mall. For both LoPAC and POHAC, the boards divided into municipalities.
Yeah.
Which we have an assessment of twenty-three million. I tried one last year over in Mansfield, in which we had a thirty-three million dollar assessment. So, you know, it gets big.
Thanks.
I believe it in Warren County, one of the highest assessments, we have the. The reservoir over Harmony. Mill Creek, two hundred and twenty million dollars. We healed that, we won that.
Court report, are we okay with the court report?
Uh, we are.
Okay. And there was no ACO report for a month, please, well, there's no. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the police department report, department of public works report, township clerk's report. Tax assessment report, court report, and ACL report.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor? Those are the cassettes we do that, yeah. Committee reports, anybody, any committees have any reports?
Uh, I, I don't necessarily have a, well, a conversation. Because we've asked our, our new zoning officer to be a little bit more aggressive in certain areas that we've been lax in. And plus, it's also that time of year where pools, decks, accessory structures get in. In, in the last two and a half weeks, Philip has run a complete, let's just say, four hours behind. He's working on stuff from last Tuesday and just got to what was actively done yesterday, or on Tuesday. We've all discussed that, we thought that there might need to be a boost in hours to accommodate everything, we're nearing that point. I, we need to discuss with Shannon, the CFO, to see right now if there's. A couple of hours in that department that we can pull, but I know it becomes. A salary ordinance issue and things of that nature. But at this stage of the game, for him just to keep even. And catch up, it's, it's gonna take more than the three to four hours a week that we're currently.
Our salary ordinance is that type that we can't adjust.
We haven't, we haven't done the ordinance for this year either.
No, right.
We'll, we'll be okay either way.
Should that would be that close of a gap that you can't adjust it.
Well, I wouldn't, I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure what we needed to talk because, and, and Philip, and I think he was very, very polite when he was, because I meet with Philip.
Yeah.
Every week, I did it with Ari, I, you know, I do miss a couple here and there. And he pretty much said, he said, Paul, if it's at all possible, could you communicate with me with email? And instead of coming down here to meet with me, because, you know, we're taking fifteen minutes while we discuss things.
Right.
And it'd be much easier for me to answer emails during the course of the week, so I think he was being very polite and saying. You're taking up too much of my time on Tuesdays.
That's what we like to hear.
Oh, well, right, you know, but with that being said, I, I kind of took the hint and I was like, you know what? And I'll, I'll talk about it this Thursday about, you know, getting you some more hours, and I want to say that. He, he did come in for a weekend to do a lot of behind the scenes work, and then he came down two other days. On a, a Tuesday and a Wednesday, and besides doing work, I drove him around town. So that he could get a general idea, and, and, you know, I'm only picking the sore spots, we didn't cover every road. But I gave him a general idea of the community where it was, what's Bloomsbury, what's, you know, the Chase? And we went around, so he has spent a significant amount of his own time, you know, trying to learn the job or something.
Right.
Um, but he basically told me the other night that he didn't even get to the violations from the week before. And I gave him a list yesterday, or Tuesday too, so. We need to talk about getting him a few more hours.
So, application fees for, you know, I'm gonna build a pool, put pool in, you know. Are we collecting fees?
Yeah, we're collecting fees, but those fees don't even come close, I mean, it's twenty dollars, every zoning que- is twenty bucks.
So, maybe it's time to think about raising it a little bit, I mean, twenty bucks, and how long kind of twenty bucks?
Well, it's been a long time, but I, you're never going to be able to raise it anywhere near salary numbers.
No.
So I don't know that going from twenty to twenty-five is that big of a deal or whatever, I mean, everybody seems to have a twenty dollar bill on them, although everybody writes a check. But I, yeah, I just don't know what the answer on, on that problem is, but like I said, right now, decks, pools are hot, home generators are still hot. Sheds are still hot.
Spring is a busy time.
And I gotta tell you, he's been dealing with four or five opers and, and I've been with him, Lisa's been with him, and although a couple of them were. Kind of lucky, tap the box, you know, with the information, you know, you could get lost across the street there. In that filing cabinet, and, you know, what could be a five minute job, or what should be a five minute job could be a two hour job. And so he's had quite a few opers of late too, you know, people asking for building plans from thirty-five years ago. And stuff like that, actually, we've got one from like sixty years ago. Yeah, all right. Where are you supposed to find that?
Yeah.
So anyway, that, I, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that we've asked more of our zoning officer. And it's immediately, you know, kind of snowballed into, it can't be done in a three hour timeframe.
Right. Forget some hours and come back with some.
Well, we're gonna, you know, I, you know, I'm gonna, if it's, if Shannon thinks it's all right. I'm gonna say, you know, maybe an extra hour a week for right now, until we come up with a salary ordinance and talk about it clearly. And let's see if that fourth hour clears it, because he'll be by himself at that point, no public, no phone, no anything.
And I had spoken to him last night too about the idea that, you know, right now he is doing a lot of catch up and a lot of new stuff, and it's spring, it's just bad timing. So maybe an hourly rate for the, you know, for now, until he kind of gets everything.
Right.
And he was.
And if it stays, again.
Well, let's give him some hours now, I mean.
Okay, if we're gonna be aggressive, like we've been discussing for the last six or seven months. About, you know, getting West End cleaned up, getting the fifty-seven corridor cleaned up and things like that, he's the one that, it falls right into his lap.
So what's your motion, how many hours, one hour a week?
Lisa, you figure one to start, between now and next May?
And see how it goes.
And see how it goes, all right, so I'd like to make the motion to adjust our zoning officers' hours by one hour a week.
Give me one second.
Second.
Any further comments, questions, discussion, roll call?
You have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Yes.
And Miss McDaniel?
Yes.
I'm done. Um, two thanks, recreation, we, we have the Easter egg hunt, which ran smoothly, and I thought it was a good turnout. Again, thank you, Joe, Joe's been, every day there's a, a new issue with fields and he's been out there every, every day, you know. Fixing the issues, thank you, Joe, and tell the guys thank you. You know, I know they have a lot, you know, on their plate, they're especially adding the soccer to it. The only other thing was, for the schools, like he's not here, they still haven't found the superintendent, and then. I, I guess I can have Mike speak on the Seafruit. Grant.
Tell me, either way.
Now we're on the school topic.
Okay. All right, last month, we talked about the Seafruits for School Grant and the fact that. For the application, we were looking to submit. And you'll hear me say this a bunch of times, but I think it's just a stellar, great application for this program. We need to secure property, some property from. John Dominguez, block twenty-six, lot twenty-six, it's the old mansions at Alamucci subdivision lot. And because I had real feelings with, with John when he was moving his application forward years ago. You asked me to kind of try to contact him, well, after many failures of, of getting an email address or a phone number. I managed to get a phone number and I finally talked to him on Tuesday, just two days ago. Very nice, pleasant conversation, I brought up the fact of what we're trying to accomplish and. And the fact that we would need his involvement to. Grant or for the township to secure, whether it be an easement or whether it be just actually a fee simple purchase. Of a, of an access easement through his property to connect Thomas Stewart Park. With the middle school, so we just put this little, this plan together. Just real quick, as you can see, obviously it shows Thomas Stewart Park down to the sidewalk along South Main Street. It does, from a pedestrian circulation standpoint, it's a great application, it, it. Takes you from the park to the school, it, it, it fills in the only void we have as far as the overall. Route, routes that are available, we're biking or walking. So, the bottom line is, John was again beyond very, very pleasant, very receptive. He, and I said, well, let's, how about this, John? Let me present it and discuss it Thursday night at the township committee meeting. We'll, we'll take a look at the, the distances and the, you know, we'll, we'll just do a quick concept. And if the township still wants to proceed, proceed with this. And I told the timeframes of when we'd have to have this done, because we, we would need to secure at least an easement from him. Prior to the submission of the application, which is in October, so. Thankfully, we, we connected and we're, we're at least moving forward now, because that, those four or five months are gonna go fast. I said, let me speak with the committee, and if they're, if they're, they still want us to proceed. I said, and I mentioned Brian, I said, that's kind of, he's been appointment at the committee level, I said, so maybe we could call, schedule a conference call. Talk in some more detail, and I said, I'll send you a plan, but let me, obviously run it by the committee first. So, here's something we, we threw together, obviously, it, it's an extension of the path at Thomas Stewart Park. And you, you can see where that thirty foot easement is noted, that's along the perimeter of the mansions at Alamucci or the Dominguez property. You can look at it, we showed it as thirty foot wide, I suspect we're gonna do the same path we have at the park as far as its width and so forth, so. We might actually need to go to a little wider than that, but. A thirty foot wide easement, and again, that's only an eight foot wide path. We've got fifty-three thousand square feet of, of easement. Again, from the compensation, the conveyance part of it, no ideas yet, none. That, that clearly wasn't discussed when I talked to him the other day, so. I, first, first question is this, are, do you like what you're seeing, do you want to proceed? I mean, that, if, if he goes, if, if we do. Then I would think this is the, the plan or something very similar to what we would want to do. Uh, I mean, everybody, everybody gets, I I think where this is going and so forth, okay.
Mike, who owns, uh, block twenty-six, lot twenty-seven, is that same ownership?
That's overly, is it?
No. Uh, yeah, it's over.
So if Mr. Dominguez wasn't exactly friendly, we might be able to have that conversation with Mr. Over. It just puts it on the other side of the. Just ask.
Yeah, I, sure.
Okay, just an option.
Yeah, no, that's, is that for, that lands, is that one of the preserved forms?
I don't know.
I think it is.
It might be.
I think it is. No, no, absolutely. I mean, it's literally back to Congress. So, no, so no.
Okay.
Um, so if, I mean, if you wanna proceed, if the next step is simple, that Brian and I scheduled conference call, talk to John.
I I like it, sure.
Good. Uh, the funny thing was, I asked John when I was speaking with him, again, we dealt back year, many, over ten years ago, probably, when he was pursuing the application. I said, I said, have you been in Greenwood any time recently? He's like, no, no, no. I said, have you seen the park? Do you know about the park? And he's like, no, what park? So I explained to him the relationship and and basically what the the idea was, was why we're doing this and why we need to cross his property. So again, great initial conversation. He didn't tell me to, you know, go
Right.
pound sand and don't ever call me again. And so, so, okay. So if, any, any questions relative to anything with what?
I I've always amazed when I look at these things.
In a good way or in a bad?
I I didn't realize that that his land came up to about our land where the firehouse is going. Like, I never realized it was that deep for himself.
Yeah.
Main Street.
Yep.
And there, so you, it's amazing when you look at these things you set up.
These aerial views are priceless. Yeah, I agree with you. So, okay. I will coordinate with Brian and and we'll schedule a call soon, I would think. And, uh, and I guess, uh, you guys would be okay with me sending this to John Dominguez?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lisa, you and Jeremy are working on a booking ordinance for something? Uh, booking the parts and ordinance for that, uh?
Uh, Jeremy would like us to revisit all three of the ordinances that were adopted in twenty nineteen. And I, Mike was, uh, you know, the one who drafted those, so I was hoping we could kinda open a discussion since my buddy's not here. So I have some notes. I know Jeremy took some notes, so it's, we were talking about maybe even a need for like a subcommittee or something, if we wanted to do something. But so then, there's nothing ready.
Well, even.
But.
A breakfast request, even the basketball, we're now, because they they might need it for summer.
Okay.
The ordinances were great to get us started, but now we're finding there's additional questions. People wanna do different things, so we, they're gonna evolve over time, so.
Uh, Shannon, Park Bond, you know how many years it left on that bond?
Off the top of my head, no.
But yeah, send me an email. Um, two months, we had Sam Santini asking us about two months. And this question is for you. Sam wants to, he wants to plant.
I talked to Sam.
Okay.
He called.
He did, okay.
Yeah, he called me.
Well, I think he said that he did, yeah.
No, it was this week.
No, I think I talked to him last.
Yeah, and you. Basically, he's planning at his own risk.
That's, yeah, right.
I, who knows when they're gonna build?
Well, I I told him that last year at this time, I would've said. The Angermans site. I, yeah, I told him that I think that, uh, they should've been ready to start, but they're, they're, they're far away from getting their county approval still. I said, in the way, this, the way the process works, uh, with land use, uh, I said, I would absolutely not be surprised if they don't break ground until the fall or next spring.
Yeah, the last spoke to Jeff, who was late summer.
Okay.
So Sam said he could put in any thoroughly being cropped it.
Right. Yeah, that's what he thought the best. Exactly, yep. Yeah, he was gonna go at his own risk.
Alright, the only other thing is that, uh, I think we're gonna start some discussions at the open space meeting about expanding the playground a little bit. Cause we're running out of, uh, oh, yeah, there's a lot of use and maybe some.
Use is unbelievable in that part.
So Joe, you and I spoke over the other day and you said, go towards Greenwood Street because the sink holds if we went towards.
Twenty to about, about twenty-five feet from that, uh, west border of that playground. Five foot, five yards of low will fill in there.
That was recently, Joe?
Beginning of March. Yeah, I was on vacation and.
Oh, that's very recently, like a month ago.
Yeah, we, we had, we had two or three smaller ones there.
How many yards you put in?
Almost five.
Oof, okay.
Uh, I'll have something of their, uh, new business, yeah.
And the Historic Society Commission, they're still, um, they're not understanding they have to go to open space in reference to the.
Plaxton.
Not the benches. One thing is the benches. So Lisa suggested I tell them they can email to have there and then have it come to us ultimately after that. The next thing was their concern because now they're talking about the Christmas tree lighting. If, um, open space would be willing to plant another tree.
Okay.
A smaller one than what's there naturally, but bigger enough for them to decorate and start with a new tree because this tree is dying. Right? Joe.
I mean.
We do have, they just finished a a treatment this spring and stuff.
Right, but it's a treatment that has to be done more often than not, the tree is dying. So they would like another tree because they feel they get a good outcome. Right, so they'd like to, um, discuss that. And Bob, um, they're still looking to make a meeting with you with the owner of the property to do something about like a gravel. I told her yes, just to reach out.
Me and I get this great basket, but I, you don't wanna represent it?
Louisa.
Louisa, okay.
And they're very interested in you to try and do that.
Okay, well, like, uh, please, maybe you and I can meet in this. Okay.
Thank you. And that was it.
Okay. Are you done then? Anybody else have anything else on the committee reports?
Oh, gorgeous.
Okay, professional reports, Mike?
Okay, well, the, the big one is we've done, we've done already, uh. Yeah, bring it up again. Uh, Rick Lionhill Road Two and Babys Road. Okay, last month you said, uh, I I know the budget's going forward, it's gonna introduce tonight. Rick Lionhill Road is, is budgeted, I. And so should we proceed? You wanna, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I thought so.
No, in fact, well, I'll tell you exactly. I'm looking at my notes. In budget, but don't proceed yet till the budget gets. Okay, so, forge ahead, I mean, which.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we're introducing the budget tonight.
And Babys, to be determined still, that's what I had.
But I don't know, I don't know that we allocated money for it this year.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I don't think we, right.
Okay, okay, well, then, fine. There you go. Then, okay, so from now on, you'll only hear about Rick Lionhill and I'll just give you updates coming up and that'll be it. And that's all.
If the town wins lottery, that's the next project.
Well, there'll be a lot of projects, Paul. You you can count on that, right? So, okay, I'm I'm good, thank you.
I didn't have to tell you quick. You were quick, Mike.
Thank you, Bob. I take that.
I'm gonna put that in a minute.
Yeah, please.
Although, they don't, we thought it underpriced. So, uh, when we met with Open Space, um, the suggestions that that came out would be to use that Elton. And and go forward with that. I'm not saying company that's being suggested to use. So they were the same company that did the paving. You have the quote number?
I don't have it.
We already approved that last year?
Yeah.
So do we have to take any action, or are we good or?
So we never approved the actual painting. They were hoping to get more quotes.
So we need a motion now.
Do we need to get an updated quote? So it's all paint costs have gone up so much? I would just be afraid to approve.
Yeah, you want me to reach out? I'll reach out to him and see if that's the same. Yeah.
Do you wanna authorize that amount?
And then all of that.
Can we authorize that amount right? And as long as it's the same, then we can have it done.
That was seventeen.
I know it was seventeen something.
Yeah, well, you could do it across.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, uh, paint the basketball courts at eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Using Elton.
I'll second that. Anybody have further comments, questions, or speciality? Just to make sure that's up to eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
If somebody looks at them. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
No.
Mr. Finnick?
Yes.
Ms. Victor, yes.
Okay. Andy, you're up. You better not have any bad news.
Well, it's all good news. Everything, everything is, we're doing well. Um, the only unfortunate news is that Mr. Mooney couldn't be here this evening. He unfortunately, he's got a, uh, a, an engagement down in, uh, South Carolina. Yeah, yeah, he's, he's going to the beach tomorrow. So, uh, just a couple of points before we get into actual budget numbers. This is a state exam year. Um, that's once every three years, which basically means after everything's uploaded, uh, the state will take a little bit of time and go through and review it. From what we've seen, it's been week, week and a half. Now that we're getting closer to the crunch time, uh, they'll drag their feet a little bit more. It might take a little bit longer, but we'll be fine. Um, we're under both the appropriation cap and the levy cap this year. Um, so once we introduce tonight on May fifth, we'll have the public hearing and the final budget adoption for two thousand twenty-two. Um, this year, the local tax rate per hundred dollars of assessed value is gonna be sixty-two point four cents. That's a two point four cent increase from the previous year. Uh, what does that mean to your average taxpayer? Uh, your average household is valued at two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars in Greenwood. And for that average household, you're gonna see, uh, an overall increase of sixty-six dollars for the year, which is five dollars and seventy-four cents for the month. Um, other than that, you know, we continue to pay down our debt aggressively. The question had come up about when the bonds mature, that's two thousand twenty-nine.
Okay.
Um, the.
For the part.
Yes, yes. Um, the, we're, we're also continuing to pay into our capital projects. Obviously, we're discussing that a moment ago here. Um, and overall, uh, very solid budget. John wanted to make sure that I conveyed to the governing body, to Lisa, Shannon, all of your department heads, all the good work that you all put into this, uh, very responsible, very solid budget. Does anybody have any specific questions on anything?
Yeah, I got one. Um, and I don't know if you can tell me that by looking at this or any, how much money was left over from last year? And what is the anticipated revenue left this year that wasn't spent?
How much did we regenerate in fund balance? Would that be the question?
Sure.
If you say so. Okay, give me one moment here.
Paul, that's how I'm putting it in the minutes.
Hi.
I'm putting it in the minutes.
The right one. Okay, so last year, we took. Definitely used to go on through this digitally. I can't find the page. There is, okay, so last year we had anticipated six hundred thousand of surplus in the budget and we regenerated six hundred eighty-six thousand. Um, looking at the budget, talking to John, yeah, he doesn't think that we're gonna have a problem with, um, regenerating fund balance again this year. So.
Somewhere around that same.
It should be somewhere around that same number, yeah.
Okay.
No, this has nothing to do with the bond. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I have a question. Uh, speaking of bond, how are the rates looking? You know, we're looking, hopefully this year, you know, looking at a firehouse, you know, municipal complex, but with the cost of, you know.
It's, it's a very volatile time to say, with, with rates. Um, you know, we've done, we've done a couple of, uh, bond sales recently uh, that have come in pretty favorably. Um, still under four percent. Um, but, yeah, they're going up. They're going up. Um, and it, it just, if you look at what the Fed's planning on doing, they're gonna continue to go up.
Mortgage rates alone have doubled from the last month.
But the other issue is the, because the, you know, what were we talking about? This new building, what was it gonna cost this?
Four million, maybe? Yeah, we're figuring it could be up to that high. I, I, I'm worried about the cost, the increases and the interest rates, but.
Yeah.
I don't know how long you take it down really to those, so.
Something that should've been done, how many years ago, Joe? Twenty-three or twenty-four?
Twenty-three years?
Nineteen ninety-nine, I presented to the committee.
Wow.
Okay, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to introduce the twenty-twenty-two budget. Anybody wanna make that motion?
Come make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Anybody have any questions? Anybody wanna make any comments? The only thing I'll say is, is it is an increase. I understand that sixty-six dollars doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start considering that we're at sixty-six, whether our school's gonna go, fortunately, the county actually had a decrease. It's still sixty-six dollars to somebody given. If you have some people, I used to use my neighbor as an example. He passed away now, but she was like a hundred and two years old and her annual income, total income was like ten thousand dollars. Sixty-six could be a lot. I mean, you could freeze it at that age, that amount of money and stuff, but I guess all I'm trying to convey is I, I don't take even the sixty-six dollars lightly. But I don't know how else we could survive without a rate favor, uh, raising taxes here because people, I say it every year, I don't know if people will literally believe it or if they look at it and say this guy's blown the smoke again. But we literally, and if you look at our budget sessions, we literally get down to, I say as a joke every year, we're counting post-its. That's how we get down to here. I mean, there's no fat in this budget. I wish I could say there was some fat, cuz we always worry towards the end of the year, something happens if we're gonna have enough to get through the end of the year, you know, so. That's all I'm saying. I'm trying to give an explanation, I guess, but I'm sure some people won't buy it, but I I welcome them to come in and look at the budget. I know looking at it's difficult for people. I don't even understand that girl, at the time, like with the words he just used, but. But the bottom line is that I, I, it's something we just have to do, but I, I don't take it lightly. I'm sure five dollars a month for some people can make a difference. Anyway, with that, anybody else? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
I'm looking for a motion to introduce order from one oh two twenty-two, which is a twenty-twenty-two call awareness. And since we don't know how to explain these half the time, could you explain what this is?
Okay, so what the call ordinance does is it, uh, it's basically like a savings account for the town. So those caps that I had mentioned earlier, um, it, it basically allows for the town that in the need that there was, we would have to increase over the, the cap amount as it normally were. What we do is we take the money that we could have raised current year and we put it into this cap bank and then we can use it in succeeding years budgets if need fit.
And I think the important part is it doesn't mean we're gonna use that.
It doesn't mean that we're gonna, absolutely, yes, you're right. I forgot the most. It doesn't mean that we're going to, absolutely, yes, you're right. I forgot the most important part.
With that, I have a motion for ordinance number one oh two twenty-two. Anybody want a second? Any other further questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thanks, Andy.
Everyone have a good night.
It's always a pleasure to see you when you have good news.
Yeah.
Okay. Looking for, oh no, not a motion, but ordinance number twenty-seventeen thirteen, repealing where it's twenty-twelve seventeen. So you want to talk about that?
Manding connection to public water and sealing of the private wells. This was discussed back when I was on you and Will. Frank, back in twenty-seventeen where the previous administration wanted all wells sealed when the properties were going to receive city water. And we found out that that wasn't, didn't have to happen. So we did introduce our ordinance back then, but I don't know whatever happened to it. Lisa did find something. She did find submitted meeting, so we need to reintroduce this ordinance. And get it codified or whatever else needs to be done. Were you on then yet?
Yes, I was.
You were, Paul?
Yeah, I, I thought that we weren't going to enforce it for folks that wanted to use it for sprinkler systems, filling up swimming pools and things of that nature. So I don't know that we ever went through and made it mandatory.
No, 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 this is not mandatory.
What we think happened is we think we did repeal it so that you could do that.
Okay.
But we can't find that document from.
Okay, so this is to officially repeal.
Code says that you have to seal, and I can only find like an introduction, and then we're missing meeting minutes. There's no signed ordinance, so to cover it. We're going to basically reintroduce it.
No.
Yeah.
It was adopted, yeah. Lily and Brian, you understand what this is then? Okay.
Okay, so up at, where I live, up in the Pace Center development. We had city water brought in. Because there was some contamination. Okay, so through a bunch of meetings with D P, with the T P E or whatever, from federal government. We had some doctors that live in the community. I, George, you always, whatever they were, and they're like, well, this chemical, it's like radar. When it hits the air, it evaporates. So there's no need to really seal the wells. So that's how it came back to the committee, and the committee said, okay, we won't you know. Okay, because the previous administration had the thing, oh, you have to, you know, have to ban the new well, seal them, you know.
Right.
So.
We believe November and December of two thousand seventeen, the governing body did repeal this ordinance. And we just can't prove it right now, so we want to redo it.
Not Lisa's fault.
It's not my fault.
I'll make that motion.
Bill made a motion. Anybody want a second?
What is it, twenty seventeen dash what?
Will be one oh three twenty twenty-two.
Oh, three.
So we're introducing one oh three.
Brian, just second that. Any further comments, questions, discussion on it? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes. Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-two twenty-two, which is a taxing redemption, resolution forty-three twenty-two, another taxing redemption. Resolution forty-four twenty-two, resolution cancellation of resolution number twenty-six twenty-two. Resolution forty-five twenty-two, which is refund of tax overpayment, and resolution forty-six twenty-two. It's an agricultural land lease award of a bit. What's that for?
But it's the, the three forms.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we got the resolutions. Any other further questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Yes.
Recreation facility use application.
You just wanted approval, because the cost of paint has gone up, Joe felt we needed to modify these field lining fees. And so if we could just get a new approval, the two fifty would go to two seventy-five, and the cost per lining, per field, ninety-five to one hundred dollars.
That's just my motion.
Yeah, and then I'll just modify the form.
I, I'll make a motion that we increase the field layout fee from two fifty to seventy-five, and the lining fee from ninety-five dollars to one hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Any further questions, comments?
I just have one. So this money will come out of open space whenever it feels to be wanting.
So this is the amount that we are now charging when people request special lining. So it's usually if there's, you know, like a travel league or something, they want a special.
My concern is, and Jeremy's concern is that where's some, how's some money flowing into the open space at that?
So we have the applicant pay that, and then Joe and I were actually discussing how it kind of has to be separated when it goes in, because right now Rec gets the field rental fee. But this money actually just goes to offset what the township put out. So we have to work it out with Shannon, but it is correct, and we can talk about it. Yeah.
Okay. We, we, we did a roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
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 Cost reconciliations for the Greenwich Court. What do we need to?
Went down, and I wanted you guys to have a full accounting.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Goodness.
Yeah. Last, but last month. Open space, update resignations and vacancies. I know we had Brian Fellner. We ever asked him?
I don't think we accepted either. I, I had Brian Fellner and Jim Butler.
Yeah, Jim, okay. I, I'll make a motion. We accept those resignations with regret. Send a letter out to them, know that we regretfully accept it, and thank them for their work they've done over the years, and appreciate it, and that's my motion. Anybody want a second? Any comments, questions?
Yeah, they contributed a lot to the committee and the amount of time they've invested in it, definitely, you know. A loss for the town. I know Brian has a new job and he's busy and
Yeah.
You know, they said they'll help out as much as they can and contribute, so.
Any other? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yes. And then for next month, Bill or Brian, whatever, if you have any ideas.
I was going to say, how many vacancies are there?
We never filled one, I think.
Yeah, we never.
Yeah.
I did speak to Bob Beterson. And he was going to talk to Jeremy. So. And I think, I think Brian's had some people interested, so maybe you guys could talk and come up with some.
Okay.
I think Jeremy had one, so.
Department of Ed, Sex Education Standards.
Well, if you're watching the news, this is a very, very hot topic. So we've had a handout here. And that is called Sex Education Standards for New Jersey Government Schools. I have them here. It's twenty-one, twenty-two. But it's curriculum has been developed by the state. And he can pass it to the audience. So, and the actually, the government actually pulled back a little bit, but I was at the school board meeting, our school board meeting last month. And we asked some questions about how it's going to be implemented. My wife met with the superintendent, along with Abby, who's sitting in the audience. And they had a nice hour-long discussion, so there's still a lot of concern, but most people aren't aware, but here, here are some questions that I like to read out, and excuse me if, I'm sorry. That some of this has to be discussed. Are you okay with your second grader student forced to learn about gender expression? How about forcing them to identify sexual parts, body parts? Are you okay with your fifth grader student being forced to learn about masturbation? Are you okay with your fifth grade student being forced to learn about sexual orientation and gender identity? Are you okay with your eighth grader student being forced to learn about being, being forced to learn about and to define what anal sex, vaginal sex, and oral sex is? So I was at Franklin Township School Board meeting last week. And when I got up and mentioned those topics, kind of raised an eyebrow, and they're kind of like, oh, what's going on? You know, so I'm trying to look, and hopefully next week at the county commissioner's meeting. I believe there's going to be a resolution of some type that they might be able to adopt to mimic Monmouth County. What they adopted last week, and I think even though this is the Board of Education's parameter, I believe that every form of government, local as well as the school board, needs to come up with some type of a resolution that say, we're not going to allow this in our schools. Let the parents teach their children about these subjects, okay? You know, in, in first grade, they're going to learn about, you know, just because you have boy parts and girl parts doesn't really mean that you have to be a boy or a girl. So I don't know. You know, there's this small minority that's pushing this stuff. But, you know, hopefully, you know, we're going to be more aware of I get this, get this out, get it, more people exposed to this, and hopefully that we will be able to see the curriculum that our Greenwich Board will be working on. Well, actually, their their administration, then they'll present it, I guess, to the to the school board to discuss, but there are things that we need to look at. But just some of the books that are out there that are in our libraries, Beyond, Magenta, Transgender Teens Speak Out. Gender Queer, This Book Is Gay, All Boys Aren't Blue, Fun Home, Ace of Spades, Bedazzled. So there's a whole bunch of stuff. Each school in America today, and our Puerto Rico and Guam and whatnot, I, I've been working on a program for twenty-two years with the FCC, and in order to get funding to this program, you have to be SIPA compliant. SIPA standing for Child Internet Protection Act. So these subjects that they want to discuss is a violation of a SIPA Act. So I don't know how, you know, they can discuss it in the school, in a, in a classroom setting, but yet the kid can't go to the library and talk about whatever, or, or do a search, Google search on whatever topic they just discussed. Because SIPA, it should come up and it should block, so. And, and the program that I'm involved in, we spend about four billion dollars of your money each year to schools and libraries for infrastructure, to have access to the internet. So hopefully, there'll be some type of resolution that we can bring down to the lower level. And I'll make a motion to present it, so we can send it down to Trenton. You know, but it's up to the rest of the committee, but I just wanted to bring it out in the open here that I'm not going to sit silent, you know, and I never needed to know that stuff, but that's such early age. I mean, I mean, you see these things on the news that, you know, kids three and four-year-old thinking that, you know. I could, could go on all night. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I will keep you informed if we can get a resolution. To send damage.
Anybody else have anything on that? Old school, where is current multiple dwelling? I see there's work going on up there.
Well, there, there is. They came into zoning recently. And there's some plans here in your, your package, and I gave Mike a bigger set of plans, and he's the back zone, because he wasn't getting, we have.
Oh, okay. There's two.
Okay, but I was for you know, we have small sets. But I want to be short, because the cart's in front of the horse right now. Um, we need to know, so when we created an area in need of redevelopment. We never followed up and said, well, we would permit that. Um, and so in some early rounds of people being interested, including the new owner. We do not allow in that zone, multi-dwelling apartments and things of that nature. And guess what people were wanting to do? And they were getting some bad information from us about not being able to do it, although the original owner was under the impression he could, but he couldn't make it fly with eight apartments. So these people have come in, they're all, they're super excited, they're going to keep the facade the same. The, the plans are here, but we have to create an ordinance, because I kind of briefly spoke with Mike, we were hoping to talk to Mike Layery tonight on the subject matter. We have to create an ordinance that allows multi occupants for a single dwelling kind of thing. Um, I'm sorry, when you're done. Oh, and, and, and basically the applicant knows that they have to come to TC to request that, and then they'll get to go to the land use board. Um, but they're already working on it, and I don't want to see any delays or things that all of a sudden bring this project to a screaming halt. But to make a long story short, I thought we needed to start to talk about tonight, the ordinance that we need to put in place to approve this multi use, or multi-residential complex in that building, because right now it's not permitted.
A question for you. Twenty-three bedrooms. And I know, I think we discussed septa or whatnot.
Well.
Twenty-three, what do you think about septa?
Is it twenty-three, two, four?
Yeah, I counted.
Bit high, but, but anyway. Well, Mike and I have discussed previously that even at eight apartments, they were probably going to have to ask for and you told me an extension of low.
Yeah.
Which you didn't think was a big problem. I don't know at, at eight if it was a big problem, but I don't know if twelve's not a big problem.
Well, in all honesty, if it'll work for eight, it'll probably work for twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Which we don't really need to get into the particulars of that. I just wanted to see what the next step is that the town has to do. Uh, so that we can catch up, so that when they're ready to go to the land use board, we don't have to do this whole process, you know, overnight.
So this is an area in need of rehabilitation.
Yes, we made it into an area. Right.
But so. When Beth was here.
I don't see a problem with them coming in and saying it's multi-unit.
No, well, exactly, but I would have expected them here tonight.
Right.
You know, but they're not, but they're working, you know? And you don't want to see that come to a screaming halt. What do you got for us, Larry?
Okay, so by the way, I'm not familiar. The last time I was here, we were talking about the old school. I do remember that, what we're going to do with. But an area needed to be developed, what, what occurs now is because this is a specific area. The zoning that puts into place is specifically to this area. So if it only, I don't know how many lots are involved, but if it's only this lot. What happens is we, we develop a, a development plan for this redevelopment zone, all right? You adopt the development plan, saying that, okay, we agree that this should have multifamily housing at a density of whatever the density is, okay, including so many affordable units, etc. And you put in details about the redevelopment about the plan itself. Basically, is a site-specific zoning ordinance for this particular property. And, and has even more detail in it. So that's the process. What you can do is ask the land use board to get planning board to get involved. Develop a plan for this thing, working with the developer. Once you have a plan that everybody agrees to, that plan is adopted by ordinance. You enter into redevelopment agreement with the redevelopment, and then the redevelopment button prepares a site plan and files an application with the land use board. That's the procedure. So yes, we need an ordinance, but it's site-specific. We don't say, okay, this is in the R-one zone, whatever it might be. No, it's just.
No, I figured it was site-specific, right? So what is the, our actual next step to tell the developer?
The next step is for the developer to present a conceptual plan, which is the usual process, all right?
Which.
That we go to.
We have a conceptual plan.
Well, these are just four plans.
Oh, it's not.
He should, he should submit a, a site plan, which would be very simple.
Okay. We don't need anything engineered.
No, these are, these are way more than I expected.
Right, so. But it now needs to go to the land, they have to get on the land use agenda?
No.
No.
Bring it short for that. They need to come here, and you need, as, as Larry just said, you need to you need to embrace what they wanna do.
Right.
And as I, so, let's assume that will be the case, then, then we move forward and Larry just.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll, we'll develop a plan. I don't frankly.
I, I, we don't know.
Kendra Layley.
Yeah, that's, we'll work with the planner.
Yep.
And developing a plan, you can have, you can have the developer put up an escrow, all right? To pay for.
It's not, it's not affordable.
You can have the developer put up an escrow to pay for the professionals. Work with the town planner and, and Mike's office in developing a plan, okay? Then, once we get it, we adopt it, if you, if you agree with it. And then, once that's adopted, then they can proceed to the planning board with site plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and, and the key part of that is when they go to the planning board, the ordinances have already been adopted for both the use, any other bulk standards and so forth. So it's a completely one-hundred percent conforming application and it's based.
Sometime be, after they design it, they may need some bulk variances, I mean.
Well. But this, this site's pretty, this is a relatively small all area, they're, and it's existing built.
Yeah, so that's not gonna, we're not gonna have a problem.
The setbacks are the setbacks.
Right.
You know, and maybe they, right.
So who's? What entity of the township needs to communicate this information to the current owner?
What, what should happen is this, all right? I'm presuming the current owner has counsel and attorney.
Yeah, sure, I would imagine.
Okay, get in touch with Mike, all right, somebody from our office to, to work on this thing and we'll, we'll lay it up, proposal, what a plan. Working with the town planner and, and Mike's office and, uh, and develop a plan that at least is submitted to you and it may be in parts, for instance, we're showing eight units. You know, what does the town think about, what's the council think about eight units here as opposed to ten or whatever it might be? So. We'll develop a plan that.
All right, so our legal counsel team has to get together with their legal counsel teams.
That should be the next.
Larry's probably taking those to be off or an email to Mike, ask the other contact is.
Okay.
Uh, what's the developer's name, what's the name of developer?
I don't know that I have the, the Mar Realist LLC.
There you go, yeah.
And his contact here, Lisa has it, she can give it over.
Yeah, yeah.
Historic Commission is tree, where is this, right? The, the, the developer's contract, basically. We, we definitely did budget that for that, right?
I think we were planning to budget for it, you guys just.
We just kept delaying, but I think it's time to act.
Yeah.
And hi, hire her for a fee, not to exceed ninety-five hundred dollars for our area need to redevelopment, which is out where Shami Shine is, the old Almond Tree Bar, the abandoned gas station, the hotel, and that whole stretch in there, so.
Does it go down to the, goes down to?
Just the blinking, I mean, to the light? Um, pretty much not, well, that property in front of us would be.
Right, that's, yeah.
What happens to that property?
Yeah, yeah, okay. The gas station, or no, the.
It's like, it's like green, it's like, yes.
Yes.
Oh, it is for sale?
Yes.
I'll make that.
How much, one point five? Okay, so Lily made the motion, I'll second it to. Lily made the motion, I'm seconding it to hire, uh, is it?
Kendra Layley.
Layley, okay, Kendra Layley as our developer for the area need to redevelopment for a fee not to exceed ninety-five hundred dollars. That's the motion I seconded and, but have any questions, comments, discussion on it? Roll call.
May I, Rossing?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Keny?
Yes.
Yes.
The new municipal complex, fire, police, and municipal up here on Greenwood Street. Have any updates on that, Joe, from the architect or any?
Yeah, the ar, the architect on Monday emailed me and he has put the puzzle pieces together. He's two thousand square foot over with what we initially laid out. He's working, working some pieces and sizes there and hope to have something of proposal, plan back to us a week or two. And also Paul asked me about, um, for the septic and stuff and I forward an email to today.
Okay, and I'm also gonna need gas or what, but what utilities are going to be there for Elizabeth Town Gas? Uh, heating, hot water? If there's gonna be a kitchen? And, and things of that nature also. And so we're gonna, with that being said, I've been in contact with Elizabeth Town Gas on, on two different things, one of which is getting gas to the facility. Um, and it's possible he didn't rule it out, you know, there's gas on Dory. Or it can be run up, uh, uh, on the one side of, well, actually, we would have to cross the county road, which that's a little challenging from Valerie. Uh, but there is gas available. Uh, once I get him the usage, Elizabeth Town Gas will tell me whether or not they're interested in the project. Um, and with that being said, I've also spoke to Dan Madden about, he's our sewer attorney.
Tour engineer.
Sewer engineer. Uh, about connecting the municipal complex to Dory. Well, to the park. He said regard, well, gravity fed is gonna be way too expensive to get it to the parks. He felt that there would be, it would be best to have a three-to-four inch main with a pump at the municipal complex going out to Dory. Um, the number, I, I don't wanna say the number was staggering, but overall, e, and again, these are just preliminary numbers, but it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, to maybe a hundred and fifty, give or take.
Uh. Versus how much for a septic system?
Well, septic system's only like fifty grand.
All right, so we're talking seventy-five thousand, maybe?
Yeah, right, but it's a, a permit thing, this septic system is not a permit. You know, there's gonna be cost for maintenance, issues, age.
And, and if we go right past this couple of homes, we're gonna get an opportunity to join in if we want.
Uh, it would be to the rear of the homes, I don't know, sure, we could certainly look at that. I mean, that is certainly an option, but I think the homes would end up being a gravity feed to our main, though, right?
Right, the ways.
And, and I, and the, the main is gonna be above a gravity feed, I think, so maybe not.
In the perfect world here, so. If you're really planning on doing that, right? Let's put a sign for a minute as a county, wouldn't it make sense to run this right along the road so that in the future, it'd be easier for people to connect them? Well, that makes too much sense, Bob.
But no, you're right.
That, that's all my.
You're right. And, and with that being said, and I, I can't speak to the sewer project because that's just being looked at. I asked Elizabeth Town Gas, I was also advocating to getting gas in the Hamlet. And they really, he presented four major problems. You know, the, the Mars Canal, which I didn't think that was a real big problem, but the two streams that run down through town. You know, crossing that was a big problem. And last but not least, he turned around and he said, and the county's gonna be a big problem. You know, so I was just like, oh, wow. When a county seems to be always a big problem with that stuff. So about permits and opening roads and things of that nature. So he's looking at it, but it didn't really sound super positive that gas could come down to the Hamlet.
It sounds like one, we have to figure out whether there's a gas, two, it sounds like we're gonna have to redo the re-early operations. Yeah, right, and if I, if, if I may, Dan called me to get some information about the park and, and as a follow-up to your discussion, I, apparently. I gave him a lot of information he had no idea about, which was actually cha, changed the complexion of things. I mean, we, the way to do it, in my opinion, is pretty, pretty simple. You just, you just run a lateral from the new buildings and that, the area along Greenwood Street that we're, that you're talking about. You tie in to the pump station that's right, that's.
Well, that's why we weren't sure if we could tie into that one or not.
Yeah, sure. It's, it's there, you may, you may have to upgrade something, it's bigger pumps and whatnot, but, um. Yeah, he wasn't aware of the fact that the pu, the park is already sewered.
See now, I thought I made him aware.
Well, he, no, he, no.
Okay.
So I gave him some information and whatever, so it was a good guy.
So with that being said, that's being all looked at right now, but that's gonna have, those paces are gonna have to get sped up once we decide what we're doing, you know, so that decision's gonna come quickly. So that's why we're having this conversation right now. But that's what I got on, on the municipal complex. But it's all rolling in the right direction, Joe, it's really gonna get built now.
It won't be twenty-twenty-nine. Do you have any questions on that or comments? Girl Scouts, the park sleepover, we have to authorize that or?
Yeah, so actually, if you wanna take even the next three together, um, I understand that that, that sleepover at the municipal park has happened for many years, but didn't due to COVID.
Okay.
And just to waive the fees for them and then the Greenwich Township School District, same thing, they wanna walk and have a picnic at the pavilion. If you guys would waive the fee for that and then same thing for the lady liners. That end of season party, I think they actually are hoping to have tomorrow, uh, so.
The Girl Scout, okay, I guess lady liners, so is that a?
It's a five oh one C three, I believe, out of the high school, right, Brian? Is that?
Um, so Eric Kooler asked, yeah, that, they're gonna do their end of the year banquet.
Oh, is that for?
For the girls' basketball team, which I didn't see. That's been a problem.
No, I just. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
It was like a travel team and then.
No, 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 it's the girls.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so anyway, we'll make the motion three.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Roll call?
May I, Rossing?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Keny?
Yes.
Mr. Victor.
Comcast has moved, nothing to discuss there, right?
Nothing to discuss tonight.
Okay, correspondent, you wanna go over that? Or you just letting us know what we got?
Just let me know what we got, I mean, there's really nothing to take action on, the only real item that the committee was involved with was asking Mike Laery to send those letters and they're in the packet, so you can see what went out.
And Lisa, with that being said, I briefly read and, and I'm not saying that, the JDEP wants us to educate the commercial establishments here about food waste. Wants the town? And, and with that being said.
Yeah, then spread the word.
Um, it, have they determined, is it, it, you know, does somebody like Apple these qualify or is it just gonna be the shop, right? With the extra produce, do we know what fits into that category?
I think it's trickling down, so if they're starting big and it's, they're gonna.
Okay. I, I just think that's, I, I, I'm like, are you? What an ask, you know what I'm saying?
You got a lot of info.
Right, right. It's just unbelievable.
The plastic bag, is that another plastic bag? I, I love the one where they now, too, they, they're referring you to go to a website.
Yeah.
First, I, I, suggestions on what type of reusable bags to use, which I, I love to see this from government. After all, we're with COVIDs, they don't even know what mask works or doesn't work. I'll even tell us what reusable bag to use.
Right.
Which one has grows the most bac, most bacteria, the least bacteria. Then after people use it for six months, they're gonna come out and say, no, you better stop using that, we found that this happens.
Oh, it's gonna be a major cause to stress, too.
It's just.
Cause they span foam.
Yeah.
Yeah, foam, you can't, you go to your local Dairy Queen, you can't have a foam cup.
This is.
So what do you put your ice cream in?
This is.
Can you go to that paper? For the foam. They're good at creating problems and they're not good at resolving problems that will govern it. And I guess includes us, I, I, at least my out is, is the government, state government restricts us so much, you can't do anything. It's, 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 like I said, I'm thinking, who? The CDC is making recommendations on what type of bags to use. For two years in the COVID, they still getting recommended.
Yeah, what kind of mask?
So, yeah. Anyway, um, so what's next? After public comment, right? Okay, we're gonna go to executive. We didn't do anything on that, on that car show. Oh, did you wanna talk about car show?
Yeah, um, Booster Club and the Fire Department are gonna be hosting May twenty-first car show. It's gonna have three food trucks and it's also gonna have a couple of the local breweries there. They were just asking for a blessing, they, they have the plans mapped out. I spoke to Brian today, Thelmer, and he thought, you know, their goal's a hundred cars, but they're, they're being realistic, it's probably gonna be twenty-five to forty cars. That'll be part of the car show, but they've been supporting us actually this month. So how much dirt do they, they buy, they, they purchase dirt for the schools?
It's gonna be about four, five thousand.
Four thousand dollars.
And they just today secured a shed for the girls' softball to go up to school, which was another three thousand dollars. So it's a good cause and I'm hoping, you know, we have a good turnout.
Didn't we authorize that already?
Yeah, they just, they wanted to give us the plans.
Yeah, we approved the pavilion.
Ironically, a pizza delivery guy said to me, hey, when they have the fires ready for them, tell them to give me some, I'll put them in.
Okay. Good, you have any, anything else?
Nope, I know Brian wants to have a couple more meetings we had, will he come and met with the, our fire department committees?
Yeah.
Lisa, can we get that on our website? Is it on there?
It's, it's not because I didn't have the flyer.
We're gonna move public comment, we're gonna go to executive. This, whoever's here now, we're gonna discuss the chief of police contract again, uh, some BPW job title and pay rates. And, uh, police contract coming up again. I'm, there's not, I'm most likely not getting any action taken.
Right.
It's just, so, so with that, I'll make a motion of public comment, second call in favor.
Aye.
And we'll wish you to come up, make a comment.
Good evening, my name's Abby Roder, I live over at five oh nine P Quest Road. I just wanted to thank Mr. Kenyac, which in the school situation, to get something that it doesn't just pertain to the school board exclusively, pertains to all of our children and the things that they're being taught. And it affects our community, so I'm glad that was mentioned, thank you. And I wanted to say thank you for the beautiful new flag that you put up in the town student park. It looks great. And they need more dog bags, I used the last one. Thank you.
Did you mention we need more dog bags?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Is that gonna be okay, is that gonna be banned through?
No, they're not banned, they're not banned.
I don't think they are. We still sell plastic bags in the store for garbage at home.
Okay.
So that would be blocked outside here, um, okay. Anyone else? Make a motion with close public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, go in the executive session.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Larry, I don't even think we're gonna need you if you wanted to home.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm assuming.
I will need you.
You don't need Larry, you don't need me. It should be very short.
Good to see you all again.
Hold it, so, nice point.